All this meeting to order, you stand for the pledge.
I.
Do you have a plan?
Stand for the.
To the probably.
It stands.
Thank you.
Vote please.
Mayor Brown.
Here.
Councilwoman Bowden.
Here.
Councilwoman Shaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Turner.
Here.
Mayor Durham.
Here.
Mayor. And then me, um. Aaron did not get a packet. Did you make one?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's good.
Wilshire.
Okay.
Thank you. There is no public comment this evening, so we'll move on to the approval of meeting minutes from the April second, twenty twenty five regular meeting. Has council had an opportunity to review the minutes? Any changes or revisions? All right, can I get a motion, please?
I make the motion that we approve. The minutes from the April twenty second, twenty twenty five, regular council meeting.
Second.
Vote please.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Barry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Shaw.
Here.
Councilwoman Bowden.
Yes.
Mayor Durham.
Yes. Moving on to reports, um, city administrator brings up to him.
That one's heavy in saying there, you need to be a reader. I don't have anything.
Right, um, finance director, Moni Edwards.
She doesn't have anything, sorry. Sorry.
Uh, and just one thing I would like to, um, share before we move on, um, so I was. Given to the, um, this is given to me by our county assessor, um, Carol Peddleson. There are three meetings coming up. It's the twenty twenty five Teller County Assessor's Office. Revaluation meetings. These little papers have the dates and locations and they're located on this, um, table at the very end as you're walking out the door, but just to be aware. Um, there is one meeting on April twenty ninth. At the Centennial Building in Cripple Creek at five thirty, and then the other one in Cripple Creek is on May eighth. At the Centennial Building, um, in Cripple Creek at five thirty. And you can also go to the county website, tellercounty.gov and go to the county assessor's office and those dates and times should be listed, so just wanted to share that with the group. All right, moving on, um, presentations, proclamations and discussions, um, proclamation declaring drinking water week, Jonathan Smith.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity just to talk about the importance of water and to bring this pro- proclamation before you. Declaring May fourth to the tenth, drinking water week. It has been enacted, um, we've had a week of drinking water. By the American Water Works Association since nineteen eighty eight. And the American Water Works Association was founded in eighteen eighty one. So it's been a longstanding honor to just show how important water is to everything we do.
So you said eighteen eighty one or nineteen?
Eighteen eighty one is when A W W A was founded and nineteen eighty eight was when they started drinking water week. Thank you.
I fully support this proclamation and I don't imagine there's.
Here, here.
I'll read this again. Thank you so much for everything that you do, um, for us and ensuring that we have safe drinking water and properly processed wastewater. Profoundly important to any community. So at this time I will read this proclamation. Drinking water week, May fourth through May tenth, twenty twenty five. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource. And whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life. Serving an essential purpose to health, hydration and hygiene needs for the quality of life of our citizens to enjoy. And whereas tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas the hard work performed by the entire water sector. Designing capital projects, operators ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water or a member of a pipe crew. Maintaining the infrastructure communities rely on to the, to transport high quality drinking water from its source to consumers' taps. And whereas the coronavirus pandemic has shown a light on the importance of drinking water for health, hydration and hygiene needs. And whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. And whereas the citizens of our city are called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution. Practice water conservation and get involved with their water by familiarizing themselves with it. Now therefore. Be it resolved that by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of our city. I do hereby proclaim May fourth through tenth, twenty twenty five as drinking water week. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah.
All right, moving on to new business agenda item A. Discussion and consider approval to oppose Senate Bill twenty five dash one three two concerning a spirit of liquor manufacturer's authority to conduct tastings.
Mayor, all I had put in your packet was actually a copy of the bill, um. C M L is against it. I don't have a resolution for you to approve. I think they'll just get a vote of the council. I get an alert. Uh, Saul that. We've taken a vote. What this is, it's kind of a bypass of city regulations. Again, it's kind of what they do endeavor. So. Right now, a manufacturer of liquor can, at their location, can have tastings. What this does is expands it to five. Which means they can open up a business in a different place, location. Fifty percent of what they sell or taste, let taste. Has to be their own product, but they're able to bring in fifty percent of other manufacturers liquor. For tasting and selling. So basically to me, they're opening up a retail establishment in four other locations. I don't know if they're gonna come to Cripple Creek, but I think it's important that the cities. And C M L all stick together. So basically what they're doing is. The state then regulates that, so you have no control over where they put them and. Like right now, you have to get a permit through the city to open up a retail. No. The state's gonna regulate it, so the state gets all the revenue. They bypass your, your regulations on where they can put it and. Again, I don't think they're gonna open up one in Cripple Creek, but.
Fine.
You never know, but. I just think, uh, C M L and the cities are coming out against it. Uh, I think they need to go through city regulations. It's just what they do all the time. If you're not watching. They're adopting bills to bypass local government, local government control, so. Even the public doesn't have a right to come in and voice opposition to a liquor license. Which they do now because we have to post the property for, properly for a liquor license. This bypasses it, so anyway.
So say we vote it down, can they still do it anyway?
Right. It, well. You're just. Voting to oppose the, the legislation. It can still go through and the governor could still sign it and it's still gonna be law, but. C M L, our lobbyists need to know that we're against it, so. Our lobbyists can speak at the legislation when this comes up, that the city of Cripple Creek is against it. And let's see a mail know that the council voted also to oppose, so. That's, that's why it's on. It's quick, stuff's happening. Every day now in the legislature, they're, they're wrapping it up, they're trying to wrap it up, so. I have another one down the road for you on iGaming, but we'll talk about that when we get to it, but this stuff is just happening. On a. Daily basis, so there's not time to get everything before the council. And see where you stand, so. We're just doing the best we can between Saul and I. Hell. I just told Saul anytime they're taking regulation against the cities. Or if they're trying to take funds like they're trying to do with the mineral impact, we did get that bill modified, so. The coal cities have to apply the same. Thing, they're not setting aside, they acknowledge for the whole cities, for mineral impact funds. They have to go through the same process, but. That's okay. As long as they're not carving out funds. I'm okay with other people applying that are mineral related, but anyway, talking about this one. It's just another. Takeaway from. Another kind of reason, I don't know how this affects home rule. But. My understanding it takes it away from all the cities. In this bill.
And arguably.
Arguably, but take it away from them too, so.
It's, it's what they're intending to do. We've been taught by the United, by our Colorado Supreme Court that regardless of those declarations. Um, by the state legislature, it's gonna be the Supreme Court Colorado who says whether or not preemption has occurred or not. But. The courts do look at those declarations.
But since we're statutory, even if the Supreme Court ruled that it doesn't affect home rule because it would still affect us because we're statutory. That's one. Another reason. You know, y'all voted to go down the road to look at home rule is because this is what they do. Anyway. So I would appreciate counsel. Voting to oppose Senate.
Senate Bill.
Uh, twenty five.
I would make that motion.
I'll second.
Vote please.
Councilwoman Barry.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowden.
Yes.
Councilwoman Shaw.
Yes.
Yes. Agenda item B, resolution twenty twenty five dash zero five, approving the community of caring foundation energy impact assistance fund grant agreement. Have motion.
Mayor, city council, thanks for being here tonight. I appreciate you listening. Uh, we're gonna table this, is table the correct term? Table this until the May seventh. Um, council meeting. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Like you need us to explain or.
I would say why.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, there's some terms in the, in the agreement that we want to make sure are clarified, both for, for the city and for the community period.
Do I need a motion to table?
Yes.
To the date specific next council meeting of May seventy seven.
I'll make a motion that we table resolution twenty twenty five dash zero five. Till the May seventh meeting. I'll second.
Vote please.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowden.
Yes.
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 Mayor Durham.
Yes. Thank you, council. Agenda item C, discussion impossible approval or denial of an alternative delivery method for distributing the twenty twenty five consumer confidence report. Um, plant director, Jonathan Smith. Jonathan. Sorry. Just can't pretend like I didn't do that, but.
Mayor, council, thank you again for allowing me to come up and just discuss the possibility of having an alternate delivery method. For distributing our twenty twenty five consumer confidence reports. So in the past, uh, to start off with, uh, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, C D P H E. In late February, early March, released the draft C C Rs. Um, I reviewed our C C R. Made the changes to only, the only changes that needed to be made were to the contact. Cause I didn't think, uh, Frank wanted to get all the calls. So I made the necessary changes. Everything else is standard language. They already have all of our results and they just put it into their template. And so your first attachment. Is the water quality report for twenty twenty four. And it's. All standard, uh, this is state form that we got from them. This is the form that is already posted on the city's website. It's the form that will be available in the city hall. Our copies will be available if people want to pick them up. They can also contact me. For copies as well, and we'll post notice at post office, we'll post notice outside of city hall. And we'll post notice on our Facebook, uh, government, uh, Facebook page. So there's nothing special with this report. Um, everything that we have to, um. Give to the customers for their drinking water is in this report. In the past, what we, what the city has done. Is they've done these brochures. Um. So the brochures. Are nice, but they come in costs. And currently. In my office, I've got two boxes of about a thousand. Of these. And so. That was the big push to go to instead of a mail direct delivery. Method, we're gonna do an electronic delivery method. On the next, uh, attachment two. Is the actual delivery form that I have to fill out and submit to the state once I've actually named delivery. And it gives you all the options of how you can satisfy the requirements for delivery. And we're gonna choose option one. And it's direct delivery of C C R to customers using the methods below. There's two methods. It's either a direct. Hard copy. Or it's an electronic. Copy. Um, we also have to do a good faith. Uh, what they call a good faith down at the bottom. And our good faith is going to be the C C Rs posted on our website. Which is along with the C C Rs for the last nine years, believe. The next attachment. Three. Or attachment four is the actual guidance. And so on page three of that guidance. Just so you kind of could follow the breadcrumbs. Of how we want to run. The brochure type to an electronic. To satisfy the requirement, it's the link of directly to the C C R. On a water bill. And so. I can't post anything on there that they have to go to the plant operations page and then click on drinking water reports. And then click on twenty twenty five C C R. It has to take them directly to. So working with staff. The last attachment. Is a mock water bill. And the highlighted portion. And the messages. Simply just. Says that the annual water quality report, C C R. Is available online. Please visit. There's a direct link. To the C C R. This, and it just says the C C R contains important information about your drinking water. For more information, please call. Same number that's given in the C C R. So instead of spending twenty five hundred to three thousand dollars. For the brochure. I'm asking that we do it electronically. And go above and beyond the simple requirements of. The water bill and. Website and do the other methods I talked about. That satisfy our requirements that way.
I love saving money.
Well, yeah. What about some possibly? Tech not savvy.
Absolutely, and, um, in the C C R itself. If they've got any questions about it or they want a copy of it, they can call the number and it'll be on the water bill too. And if we have to hand deliver the paper copy, not a problem.
I mean, I'm sure it won't be a ton of people calling for that, but if there's a few that would like.
It doesn't seem like it, but I still have about a thousand of these from last year.
But yeah, I definitely want to be mindful of our citizens who are, so just to confirm my understanding, it would be a printed paper copy, but not the fancy fancy.
Yep, it would just be, I'm gonna print off a bunch of these and I'll hand them, uh, to the. And then we'll actually create a, uh, notice. We'll post outside, we'll post at the post office and we'll be on our government Facebook page as well. And it'll have information that they can contact me if they. Want a hard copy.
Okay. Yeah, as long as they have that opportunity, I'm, I'm good with it. All right, any further questions or discussion?
I just wanted this to glow in the dark, so I asked. Can you present to council so you know we're changing, but that way the public hears it openly. Council approves it, so that's why we're doing this.
I was gonna say also like make a, I mean, obviously it'll be on their water bill, but maybe make a post on the Facebook page, make, you know, do some things like that. Just make sure it's everything. We said.
So because this is a discussion item, does it require?
Well, card we could set up for you to vote on it. Um, but the, the motion, if you're ready for that, we're just simply need to through the alternative delivery method. As president.
So moved. Yeah.
Oh. So who made the motions?
Me.
Just made a motion. Making a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, vote please.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
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 Mayor Durham.
Yes.
Thank you. And this fits great with the, uh, drinking water week. And so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Okay, agenda item D. Jonathan. Public hearing to consider and potentially approve or deny resolutions for the construction of a childcare facility for the community of caring. Um, that includes the following, one. Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero nine for certificate of appropriateness, appropriateness. Two, resolution twenty twenty five dash one zero, approving a conditional use permit and. Jalen.
Um, so I'm gonna be presenting both staff reports today for the conditional use and for C O A. So I'm going to do them together just to save a little time and it also will help us when they're presenting their side and questions can all be asked in conjunction. Um, so I am presenting to consider the approval to award. Both a certificate of appropriateness and a conditional use permit. For community of caring to, for the new construction of a childcare center for. To be built at, the legal description of the address is lots five through seven, block five, Fremont. And lots one through four, block eight, Fremont Place or addition. Uh, for the. Certificate of appropriateness, we did have a meeting with the. H P C, the historic preservation commission, they did review all of the plans. After discussion, uh, it was agreed that they would approve the plans, uh, without condition. That happened on March eighth, twenty twenty five. So the applicant has satisfied all the criteria for approval. The staff recommends approval of the resolution twenty twenty five dash zero nine without conditions. Uh, for the conditionally use permits. The, there wasn't approved, uh, conditional use permit, or no, I'm sorry, reading one. The conditional use permit is. Because the, uh, permitted use of the land right now isn't what we're proposing is, of course, the conditional use permit would satisfy that. The applicant has satisfied the criteria for that approval as well. Uh, the staff does recommend approval of resolution twenty twenty five dash ten. With conditions that are listed in the, in the resolution and in your packet, um. I think that's probably all I need to provide. Oh, it is for the daycare center and the exploratory. So any questions for me right now?
Pretty good drawing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's nice.
I really like the. The design.
We're, we're big fans.
Well, I know you guys have been working on this for a while. So. Um, is the applicant here with soon, if you'd like to speak?
Good evening, uh, Mayor and City Council, Tim Gordon, Community of Caring Foundations. Yes, community centers. See Weston. A break. Just excited to be able to, uh, move forward with the project. Um, I, uh, was prepared to give. Full fledged presentation if necessary, but I don't think that that's. Necessary. I do have on the call, to call David Mahars, who's a civil engineer and. Um, Elizabeth Madute from T D G Architecture, who can answer any. Questions. I think I've, uh. Provided a lot of information in terms of the back map need. And those types of things. I don't want to, uh, go. Over that again unless there's a, a need to. Uh, but I certainly am happy to answer any questions. We are. Really thrilled to be moving forward. Obviously we had a table, the M O U, because there was still some. Clarity that needs, uh, to be presented to our board and just to make sure that all of that is in working. But this is exciting. Start moving. Um, shovels in the ground and, and start getting this thing going. So. Happy to answer any questions and any specifics. If you would like me to present on anything specific and certainly. Uh, the pros are on the call, uh, David and, and Elizabeth. If you have any design or civil engineer questions and site prep question.
So Ted, I was just looking at this rendition, is this phase one, this?
Yeah, so, uh, just a little clarity, uh, phase one is going to be, um. The entire shell of, of the building, so that would be the east and west wing as well as the front facade. Um, and it will include all, uh, it'll include four classrooms. The kitchen and the exploratory. Phase two then would add two classrooms. The interior would be. Uh, completed in phase two, which is so that the, um. Phase one consists of ten thousand square feet. Phase two is about thirty two hundred. Um, and phase two would be the west wing completion of two classrooms. Bathrooms, another office on the west wing. Uh, but the shell is gonna be completed as a whole because it's going to save a lot of cost down the road. So that was the most strategic way to, uh, to present.
I was gonna say, yeah, I'm really happy with it. I'll come on the drawings and.
It looks great.
It really hits the character, you know, and makes a nice extension on that.
Thank you. I, I was really proud of the design, uh, Elizabeth and Mark from T D G did a great job with. Trying to, to provide the historic integrity, um, that Cripple Creek deserves and still encompass some of the school features that we really wanted to keep. So it was a great topic.
Do you have a place for kids? Pretty cool.
Um, and just a question, I know this is, um, probably quite some time down the road, but I know there's been a desire expressed to have a twenty four seven, three sixty five facility. Um, is that still tenant? So with, with the phase one and the phase two, I know it's classrooms, but is that conversation still going, providing that level of service down the road? And what would that look like in the, in the building as far as like the. Would you can be like sleeping or what would that?
Yeah, we, um, maybe adding to the answer of the twenty four seven piece more than I could, but. We know that initially that's not going to be a possibility. They wanted to sign the building with that, get mine down the road. Um, so, uh, initially we're looking at, we literally just recrafted the business plan that we. And of course, community of caring is not going to run the facility, but we have been doing a ton of research in regards to what that would look like. From an operator's standpoint. So we're looking at a seven day, eleven hour a day, so we want to make sure we're hitting as much of the, uh. Of the casino and mining, uh, employees. I mean, this is an employee, employer based childcare center for. Boys is of the big intent here. Not that it, I mean, it's going to encompass more than that. But, uh, seven hour, eleven hour days, we think is going to be a really good start to that. And then the need is gonna drive the rest of that process. So if we can. Make it happen for twenty four seven, if the need is, is truly there. Then that's the direction we're gonna head. We've had great conversations also with the courthouse and drop ins from. Uh, people that are using the services or the courts. Uh, so we know that that's, uh, one of the main things that we're trying to hit. We're just trying to make this as multi-use. As possible, but of course, the, the original, uh, intent through C D act through. Colorado Division of Early Childhood was to make sure that this is. For employees in, in the community and that was biggest component, but everybody else obviously is going to be able to use that stuff. So I didn't really answer the twenty four seven, but it's certainly something we have our sites on. If I, Patty's a pro at the. At the, uh, licensing, so she's asking those questions of C D act, what that would look like, making sure that all of the. The licensures, uh, as we move forward, the building design, all of that has that in.
So just a question, will it, what would happen with the Head Start program at the school? Would it stay where it's at or would? It move into?
Yeah, Head Start would stay where it's at, but we're going to also be supported by the community grant that Head Start has. Uh, and so because we're an adjunct or another licensed facility, we can also utilize some of the funds. From Head Start to be able to support some of the, the, uh. The families that are gonna be using this facility as well. So there's gonna be a close integration of services. Um, because Head Start is a four eight hour a day. Week, and so we know that the demand is, is more than that. So there's gonna be a lot of integration with Head Start. They've been at the table. For the last two years to make sure that we're. So there's going to be a lot of integration with Head Start, they've been at the table for the last two years to make sure that we're, uh, communicating about that as well. If there's any specifics, uh, she could answer those as well, she was the Head Start Director for.
Um, Patty, did you have anything you wanted to ask?
Uh, when you started that, can you start in the microphone please, or online people, thank you. The, um, the part that he was talking about is for as the, I'm short, um, the, uh, use of the Head Start funds. Remember we received that early Head Start Childcare Partnership Grant that was over a million dollars. And that is used by our Office of Head Start to partner with private childcare facilities and childcare programs, which would be a place for kids. Unfortunately, since we have no licensed childcare in this community, all of that money is going to North Teller County right now. So with this, um, project and having a licensed center facility, we can bring that million dollars back to Southern Teller. And so that's kind of what we're working with because that was the reason why that grant was written, and we need to bring it back home.
Thanks. Any additional questions for Ted before we open it to public hearing? Awesome, thank you. We will leave back to our public hearing.
I know Elizabeth is standing by with rendering and schematics, if we wanted her to put any of those up on the screen.
Are they, I mean, is that something we could do so that everybody can see what we're looking at?
Elizabeth, are you there, would be be able to share your screen?
Yeah, sure, I can share the screen, hi, uh, I'm Elizabeth and let's see, um.
I wait for you to come all this way virtually and not, uh.
Well, and yeah, I'm happy to share the images, let's see. Um, is, is my, are you seeing my screen?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, let's see. Okay, how about now?
Yep.
It's coming up.
Um, yeah, we have been thrilled to work on this project with Ted and Community of Caring. Um, it's been very rewarding and, um, we're excited to, uh, bring. This childcare center, um, to Cripple Creek, which, uh, seems like, um, a, a need in the community. And, um, we worked closely with, uh, Jay and Camille, and I think, um, the result is a really fun building. That is, um, you know, honors the, the historic character of Bennett Avenue and Cripple Creek. So, and happy to answer any questions anybody has about the design, but.
I just have one question, so will, will this eliminate the parking between the AMC West Building and the, is there's? I just can't tell from the drawing, will there still be parking?
There, um, no, the, we are proposing, um, a, um. Upgraded parking lot in the, the space between where the existing parking is now, um, that will be part of the project. And Ted, Ted, uh, you, you may be able to, um, talk about that more, but it would be in this area here, that, that's the existing parking.
Way bigger from that side, so.
Yeah, so, uh, David and I actually worked on this, uh, a couple of weeks back, so David, if you have any comments in regards to parking, go ahead. But we're looking at a lined, uh, parking area, so this would be paved. The egress, uh, for the building, so, uh, obviously there will be drop-off, uh, areas for the older kids. And then walk-in area for the, for the infants and toddlers. So, uh, the, the west side of the building, uh, will be the drive and it will, and, and, uh. They will actually drive around the building to the back and then through the, uh, the parking area that exists now, that parking lot will actually be expanded. And we will have, I think, up to twenty-four, twenty-six slots there, right now, there's. You know, it's not lined and it's dirt, and so it's, it's accommodating twelve or fourteen cars. So, uh, after David proposed that, it made a lot of sense, and so it's going to clean it up, it'll all be paved, it'll have a very designated drop-off point around the building. And so it, it just made so much more sense, David's been a huge asset, this project already.
So I guess we will open up, we will open the public hearing at this time, and Erin, I will defer to you, um, since I don't have a script.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's exactly right. Typically, you, um, have asked for comments, uh, in favor first, and then. Those commenters come forward and then, um, comments opposed. And then at the close of those comments, then the mayor would ask the council for a motion to close the public comment portion. And you deliberate based on the staff report findings.
And if there are any negative comments, we allow to have anything to rebuttal.
Yes, you do.
All right, so at this time we will open the public hearing, is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of the approval? Anyone who would like to speak against approval?
I'll speak in favor.
We'll go back. So, um, Kelly, um, please use the microphone, you can also state your name if you're.
Thank you, because I do apologize, it was so quick, I was just giving somebody else a chance to talk. So it is necessary for the, the casino employees, that really hurts my neighbors. They work in the casinos, you know, and a lot of these people, they're working, one works days, one works nights, so there's some of their kids. And then we do like, um, bellies, you guys, my turn, you probably stirred up, some kids have stuff, this is really needed. And I am so grateful that you will approve this and it will be answered in prayer, thank you.
All right, now let me call this again. All right, is there enough, can I get a motion to close public hearing, please? Vote, please.
Council, which way?
Yes.
Close the vote one?
Yes.
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 You want to put some brown?
Yes.
You're dirty.
Yes, um, and since there are no comments against approval, there will be no rebuttal required. Um, so that being said, is there any additional discussion from council? So are we, am I doing a, are we doing a motion to approve both? They were, they're together, two separate motions, two separate motions, yes. All right, so can I get a motion to approve the, um, which one's first, sorry? The certificate of appropriateness?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero nine for certificate of appropriateness.
I'll second, vote please.
Yes.
Close the slot.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
You're dirty.
Yes. Thank you, can I get a motion for the second resolution approving a conditional use permit?
Make a motion to approve resolution two zero two-five dash one zero approving a conditional use permit?
Vote, please.
Close the slot.
Yeah.
Council, which way?
Yes.
You're putting some brown?
Yes. Yes.
You're dirty.
Yes, awesome, thank you guys for all of your work, I can't even fathom what, how much work you've done, so.
Thank you very much.
Very good progress.
Awesome.
Thanks to David and Elizabeth.
Uh, yes, and thank you for being online today, we appreciate that. Okay, moving on to agenda item E, public hearing to consider resolution twenty twenty-five dash one-one approving the High Country Haven subdivision plat, planning and community development, um. Jake, true.
So I am also presenting the staff report on behalf of the planning department. Um, we are presenting, uh. It's a considered to approval, or a consider. Consider approval of a plat for a major subdivision, um. Dividing certain real property into sixteen parcels for the development of sixteen single-family dwellings. The legal description of the address is lots one through eleven and thirty through forty, block twenty-five, Freeman placer, Freeman placer addition. Uh, this actually had an approval once before, it has expired, there was a change to the plat as well, which is why, another reason, that is for you to deliberate your forward. They did add two new parcels that would add to the subdivision, um. The applicant has satisfied all the criteria, criteria for approval, and the staff does recommend approval with conditions, uh, for resolution twenty-five dash eleven. Questions for me?
These lots are bigger than our normal lots, Greg, that's what I remember.
There was an adjustment that was made that, uh, with the two parcels coming in, there was a line, uh, with, there were lines that would move to adjust the size. We do have the applicants here as well to answer questions.
Unless there's any questions from staff, uh, or council, if the applicant had any comments before we open public hearing? Not so much. All right, um, then at this time we will open the public hearing, um, is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this approval?
So Susan Bell comes, Go Camp Thousand Partners, I would like to speak in favor of this project, we have worked very diligently on getting a lot of approvals and funding and, uh. We appreciate all, all that the city has done for this project and putting top fees and everything. So I'm hoping that you'll vote in favor.
Anyone else? All right, anyone who would like to speak against approval? All right, there's no comments against, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion to close the public hearing, second.
Vote, please.
Close the vote?
Yes.
You want to put some brown?
Yes.
Close the slot?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, as there were no comments against, there is no, um, need for rebuttal, any additional discussion or questions from council? All right, can I get a motion, please?
I'll make the motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven.
Second.
Vote, please.
Close the slot?
Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
You want to put some brown?
Yes.
Yes.
I might just say real quick, I think those guys have been killing it down there, making some good progress.
Yeah, um. Yeah, my husband and I drove past the other day, and I know I've said it, I love the design, um, and I'm looking forward to the.
My wife said the same thing.
Education, so.
Just to update council, we're, we're going to be working on finishing up the development agreement, which is city administrator can sign. And then they'll get the bond placed, and then we're after it. I think, uh, Steve wants to be here for the blast, because we're going to have to blast.
Yeah, I know.
I want to be there for the blonde.
It's just going to be a little vague, I still want to be here.
I don't care, I want to be out of town that day.
But, thank you guys for bringing this project to the community, it's, it's very much needed. All right, the agenda item F, consider approval of joint resolution twenty twenty-five dash one-two opposing iGaming. Great.
Thank you, ma'am. So I've been talking to Blackhawk, Central City, Gilpin County, and Tar County about this, and we were talking about bringing a joint resolution for all the boards to. Uh, present an iGaming, to be opposed to iGaming. Uh, we're concerned because the iGaming would open up the sports betting companies like.
DraftKings.
DraftKings, so basically anything that they're allowed to do in a casino, they would be allowed to do online. Which we think drastically hurts the brick and mortar stores because people don't have to come up here to do whatever. Right now, they can just sports bet on, on the internet, uh, they are pushing for iGaming. DraftKings, that group, and what we're concerned about is this is going to drop at the end, at the end of the session. I don't think there's been a bill drafted yet for it, but it, there is a bill related to gaming. It has something to do with how much money the, the, uh, Denver, the government, the state transfers money to a different organization. It's the money they get from, from gaming. So I think with that bill being there, again, it's a parliamentarian issue, but I do think it has to do with gaming. Our Saul doesn't, I don't think agree with me that can be attached, but I've seen stuff happen weird at the legislature. So I think at the very end of the session, they could attach a bill on iGaming, and we're not going to be there to voice opposition. So we're trying to get a resolution in front of it in case they do present. So I talked to him today, Teller is on board, I talked to Ross, uh, county administrator. I sent him a copy of it, they're on board, he's talked to the commissioners. The only concern we have is Gilpin County, they might not, or they might, we don't know yet, but Blackhawk and Central City are on board. So what I would ask the council to do, approve it, and if Gilpin decides they don't want to partner, then we'll just take their name off their resolution. And the mayor can sign and we'll get submitted, so if it's okay, I'll read the resolution. Please take them, do you have a question?
Well, I just, I, I did have a question, um. We already can do this in Colorado. What? I signed up for Golden Nugget and I deposited twenty bucks, they gave me a bonus twenty bucks. And I can spend all the same spots that we have downtown. Um, I was cruising through my Facebook page about two weeks ago, and there's an ad popping up, the Bronco Billy's is now online. So, what's going on?
My understanding, I don't know why they're, how they're able to do it, because the Attorney General of Colorado has written a report on iGaming and said it has to go to the voters of the state. It can't be approved by the legislature, and they can't do iGaming.
So is Nugget operating illegally? Cause I know like with the, uh, Sportsbook, um, when I was placing bets a few years ago. Um, I had to make all my bets before we left the state. Because my location had to be turned on, and once I crossed the state line. I could not do a bet on my phone. So I don't know if Nugget and Broncos have something, the pool house.
I don't have to answer, I didn't know they were doing that, it's my understanding that the legislature has not put a bill before, and the governor has not signed a bill on iGaming. But I know in the past, uh, like, yeah, I saw the resolution on the state gaming board today that, uh, the governor's, I mean, the attorney general's ruling. And it has to be a statewide vote to open up anything on iGaming, so I don't know how they're doing it.
I should probably, like, get rid of the app so I'm not breaking a law.
Before Baxter left, I know there was a, a beating of the Association of Gaming statewide. And they had a vote, and only two casinos did not support. A ban or opposing it, and all the rest of them voted to oppose it, so I don't know how they're doing it. There's also a national association of gaming, and they've spoke out against it. I think tomorrow or tonight, uh, Central City's voting to join that national organization, Blackhawk is a member. I'm going to look into it and see what the cost is, I might bring it to you all at the next, but I know they voiced nationally against iGaming, state associations against it. So I don't know how they're doing it, and it might take a lawsuit.
I, I, I certainly couldn't give any opinion based on this conversation. Or, it's something that. Me, to, to talk into them.
Yeah, because when I downloaded the Golden Nugget, I can earn points that, online, that I can use here in Cripple Creek.
Chief, do you have your cell sign? Just keep talking.
I'm just saying, I'm wondering how it's. How it's going through.
I have no idea. I didn't know they were doing it, and I don't know how they're doing it. We'll definitely be talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So. Anyway, State of Colorado, County of Gilpin, City of Blackhawk, and City of Central, City of Tellers, uh, County of Teller, City of Purple Creek. Uh, the joint resolution of the host gaming jurisdictions of Colorado opposing the introduction of iGaming in Colorado. Whereas nineteen ninety, the voters of Colorado approved article eighteen, section nine of the Colorado Constitution authorizing limited gaming, which all. Which authorization was geographically limited to the cities of Blackhawk, Central, and Purple Creek. With said cities being located in Gilpin and Teller Counties, the host gaming jurisdictions. Whereas the introduction of game, iGaming in Colorado resulted in significant reduction, visitation and local gaming activity in the host gaming jurisdictions. Whereas the introduction of iGaming in Colorado would under. Whereas the introduction of iGaming in Colorado would undermine the foundation upon which gaming in Colorado has been built, as approved by the voters in the state of Colorado. Economic impact would be severe as casino revenues would decline. Government funding would be reduced, and job losses would incur both private and public sectors, whereas the introduction of iGaming in Colorado will have a detrimental economic impact on the host gaming jurisdictions, not only through diminished gaming tax revenue remitted, but also through declining property tax values collected. As a reassessment of licensed gaming properties will undoubtedly result in lower appraised property values used either the incoming approach or the market analysis, whereas the host gaming jurisdictions have made significant financial investments in infrastructure and core governmental operations, including but not limited to water wastewater treatment plants, law enforcement, fire protection, emergency medical services, and public works departments to facilitate and prepare for long-term growth in the land-based and geographically limited gaming industry in Colorado. Whereas in order to implement the voter-approved amendment to the Colorado Constitution authorizing geographically limited gaming in the host gaming jurisdictions, the host gaming jurisdictions have embarked on projects and developments to add amenities and attractions to complement gaming, broaden their appeal to more visitors, and the loss of gaming revenue will have a chilling effect on these efforts. I didn't notice this was a long day, sorry. Whereas since the inception of land-based gaming in Colorado, numerous attempts have been made to expand gaming geographically in Colorado, with each attempt being soundly rejected by voters, thereby indicating that Colorado voters desire to keep gaming limited to the current host gaming jurisdictions, whereas based on the Colorado voters' will that gaming not be expanded, the host gaming jurisdictions have continued to invest financially in their communities, including issuing debt for infrastructure and other improvements to support land-based gaming, and whereas the host gaming jurisdictions have made significant financial investments and extraordinary efforts to support, enhance, and expand land-based gaming operations, which will increase visitation and local gaming activity, thereby generating additional gaming and sales tax revenue for the state of Colorado. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council, the city of Blackhawk, city council, the city of Central, the Board of County Commissioners of County of Gilpin, the Board of County Commissioners of Teller County, and the city council, the city of Purple Creek. The recital set forth above, above, the recitals set forth above are incorporated herein by this reference. Section two, the host gaming jurisdictions hereby state their strong and unequivocal opposition to the introduction of iGaming in Colorado as unconstitutional and contrary to the geographical limitations on gaming in Colorado as approved by the voters of the state of Colorado in approving Article eighteen, section nine of the Colorado Constitution in nineteen ninety, and as the same has been amended by subsequent voter approval.
All right, any additional discussion? And just for, I think, just for clarity, the the city's budget, almost approximately two-thirds of our budget is from gaming device fees. And so if we see a significant drop in the brick and mortar on people that come up here to our casinos, not only, you know, resulting in a reduction in employment, but that would have a negative impact on the school district. It would have a negative impact on what the city can do as far as our roads and our sidewalks. And so I'll be honest with you, this one, this is one of the biggest concerns I've had since I've been sitting in this seat, and so I am very agreeable to approving opposing this, approving opposing iGaming in Colorado. So any other comments? Okay, can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve joint Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve opposing iGaming.
I'll second. Vote, please.
Yeah. Yes.
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 Yes. All right, everybody, that concludes our meaningful evening. Thank you so much for being here, and we are adjourned.